Well, we had full reservations, but I just wondered if maybe the storm roll is gonna be rolling in here, maybe it's keeping people away. As of right now, there is a tornado watch for the southern part of the county, just by word on that. So, if those of you who have urgency tones on your phone and are signed up to New York Alert, they start going off, we'll go from there with that. Okay, one thing I neglected to do with the last couple of these is kind of where the restrooms are. So if you walk back more there and make a right down the hall, and there's a little, and then another right, there's the restrooms right there. Emergency access will be here and here, and you can go out the front door, awesome. So, now the other thing that we're gonna do tonight is we're gonna have the aldermen introduce themselves.
Tornado Wayne brought this.
Bye Dave.
Hi, everybody. I don't see the people behind the stairs. I'm Linda Webb, I'm the alderman for Ward 1. I've been a public servant for about twenty years now, and I enjoy it, and it's good to have you here, and let's just keep the conversation going.
Good evening, I came up, but I have a brace on my butt, I'm not here. But I'm Ron Palito, Ward 6, I'm representing the people of Ward 6. You need me, you know where to get ahold of me.
So anyway, my name is Paul Gonzalez, I am the alderman for Ward 3. I've been on the council, this is like eighth year, and once again, I'm glad to be here.
I'm Jeff Rowley, I'm the police chief here for the city of Ole Miss.
I'm John Crawford, alderman of Ward 5, this is my fourth year on the council.
Paul, he's generalizing this.
Hi, I'm Kevin Doherty, I'm representing Ward 4 in the city of Ole Miss. I'm probably one of the few aldermen that actually puts his personal cellphone on the city webpage, so if you guys have any questions for me, text, phone calls, day or night, angry, hate mail, there we are.
Hi, I'm Dave Anastasia, I'm serving my 23rd year on and off, holding public office. I've been on the county legislature, I represent Ward 7, so this is my third, this is my third meeting that I attend, so we're out here listening to you, and the people down in Ole Miss is what I represent, so if you have any questions, give me a call.
Okay, now, we are social distance, so you're welcome to remove your mask, that's your choice, but as long as you're, as long as you're social distance, if you get up to move around, please put your mask back on. So I've asked Reverend Wes Gilbert if he would lead us in a prayer to open up the meeting.
Let's go before the Lord, in prayer of the Lord. Father, we thank you for this opportunity, as we assemble here concerned about our society and our community. Lord, I pray that you bless all things that are done, all things that are said, will be done to glorify you. Lord, let it truly make some difference in our community as opposed to making noise. And so today, Lord, I pray you touch each and every one who's blessed, that it'll be truly a productive meeting, and we'll thank you and give you praise for all things you do in our lives, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks Reverend, appreciate it. Okay, we will be moving right along here, assuming we have speakers lined up, we have individuals who have asked to speak. I would ask that those of you who have already given comment, give the people who have not made comment yet the opportunity to speak, and then we'll move on as we have time to anyone who wants to give a comment. So, having said that, and we're gonna wait a few, we're gonna wait a few more minutes to fill these seats, we're gonna give the people the opportunity that have reserved seats to come here. So, in a couple minutes, we will let those standing outside come in, so. Hey, Michiko, I understand we had a request for speakers, first speakers?
Leo Elson, Nancy Anstrup.
Okay, Leo, you're up. Same four minutes before, five minutes, and then if you have not finished, we'll come back to you as soon as we get through all the speakers. Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Leo Walters DeHera, can you hear me?
It's got like sand in the bottom or something.
My name's Leo Walters DeHera, and I am not here for myself, I'm here to speak as a representative of the Ole Miss Racial Justice Coalition. There's been a little bit of complaining in the media about who we are and what we stand for, so we're gonna clear that right up for you guys tonight. Once again, we're here for the Ole Miss Racial Justice Coalition. On January 1st, 1863, the Emancipation Proclamation was signed into law, declaring that all persons held as slaves within the rebellious states are and henceforth forward shall be free. Two entire years later, on June 19th, 1865, the final remaining slaves in the United States were free. Yet in many ways, we are still waiting for June 20th as a nation. We are still waiting for the full manifestation of the phrase that all men are created equal. On May 25th, 2020, at 9:25 PM, George Floyd was pronounced dead at Heatherland County Medical Center in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and out of this moment, a revolution was born. On May 31st, over 300 people gathered in our very own Lincoln Park to protest police brutality and the death of George Floyd at the hands of a corrupt system, and the revolution came to Ole Miss. On July 11th, the Ole Miss Racial Justice Coalition publicly declared the vision of a truly equitable Ole Miss. We listed our specific mission, vision, and core values, along with a specific demand for police reformers. I've been hearing that people don't know who we are, and they don't know what they stand for, what has been out there since July 11th, and I tagged the mayor's office, and I tagged the county legislature, and I tagged every single elected official that I could find, and not one person made a response. I've since spoken with several aldermen, we've had the privilege of conversing with the local officials, but I'm disheartened at the silence of my elected officials, and I'm disheartened at the willful ignorance based on our position. I know you stated last time that I called your name, I'm not here to call your name, I checked the tape, I didn't call you a name last time, but I did speak honestly with you, and that's why we need you to hear us, because right now, you're our elected leader, Mayor Leo. So we need a leader, we need someone to lead, and we cannot be reactionary, we must be proactive. Right now, you've got people that are ready to lead, so let's go, because if not, someone's getting left behind, and we aren't slowing down, we're trying to hatering them. Here's our specific mission, vision, core values, in case you missed it on our Facebook, YouTube, Instagram, Twitter, and website.
Hi, my name is Alice Gaten, I'm also with the Ole Miss Racial Coalition. People in this community are using the Black Lives Matter organization to nullify what we stand for. Ole Miss Racial Justice Coalition is indeed a separate organization, and the only use that we have for Black Lives Matter is that it is a statement of fact. We are here for all marginalized people of this community. In Ole Miss, we have a beautiful blend of ethnic backgrounds and cultures, this is a sector of Ole Miss that has not always been welcomed in our community, it is high time for this to change. This is the moment that we can either take this opportunity and make positive changes for all of our communities, or we can continue doing the same old, same old, that only benefits some of this community. By not making change, we risk watching the young, vibrant, smart, and diverse community lead. It's time to create an environment where all people can thrive. We would like to outline our mission statement and our core values. Our mission statement is, Ole Miss Racial Justice Coalition exists to empower individuals of all races to actively work towards ending racism through participation in local state government. Our vision, Ole Miss Racial Justice Coalition will work to end racism through establishing a civilian-led police accountability committee, identifying potential community leaders, and candidates for public office, and leading grassroots efforts to educate individuals of all ages on the history of racism in American society. ORGC will advocate for justice for all minorities and disadvantaged populations by lobbying for laws that push forward an agenda that ensures everyone, including elected officials and those employed by the county and city government, are held to the same values and expectations of the public. Our values, we are a community-based organization comprised of diverse individuals dedicated to holding law enforcement and elected officials accountable for intentionally dismantling systemic racism. We intentionally center the white narrative and center the black narrative, and create space for all underrepresented narratives. We intentionally create space for intersectionality in our actions, we acknowledge that the white, heterosexual, able-bodied narrative has been assumed to be the default. By being intentionally intersectional, we affirm that all individuals experience life in unique ways, and that all these unique experiences must be integrated into local law and government functions. We intentionally give voice to underrepresented populations, especially in public forums. We are unequivocally committed to demanding law enforcement and elected officials intentionally creating a system that is equitable and accessible to historically disenfranchised individuals.
Hello, my name is Dave Newgate, I hope a lot of you guys know me, and I'm here representing ORGC, and I want to speak directly to the council, Mr. Gonzalez. Four weeks ago, at a county council meeting, you guys passed a resolution to support the Black Lives Matter movement, and also in that resolution, you agreed to set up a diversity board on what we're seeing by the county council. Four weeks is way too long for no action to be had, so as ORGC, we are asking that you put that on the agenda for the 21st, for the meeting on the 21st of your next council meeting, that the diversity board is set up. Since our elected officials seem to have a hard time outlining what should be on the diversity board, ORGC took it upon themselves to help you guys with skeleton, an outline of that committee, of which all you guys now have a copy of, and also the town car over. So, Mr. Gonzalez, I am going to ask you today, will you put the diversity board on the agenda for the next committee meeting on the 21st?
Absolutely, I've never been hesitant.
Four weeks, we should be able to get that done by now, thank you, I appreciate that. Mayor, I understand that you wanted to meet with us through a variety of different people, you still don't understand what we stand for. I'm here to tell you today, you say you want to be educated, I've never known a lot of people to be educated and not come out of their office and get educated. I'm telling you, since that's your intention, we will be at, me and four other people will be at your office on the 22nd at 5:00. If you want to meet with us, that's where we'll be, we'd be more than happy to sit down and have a conversation with you. But the time for talking is over. The town halls, everybody's expressed everything that they needed to express. We need action, it's action time, and that's what I'm here to ask for, is action. I'm not worried about a survey, I'm not worried about whether somebody's landlord is taking care of their house appropriately, I'm worried about where we're going with the governor's plan to get these things done, that he asked to be done, and not sugarcoat them. Do it the right way, for the right reasons, for the people, and the diversity board is key to this, because that's what's gonna keep the city moving forward on the right track. Long after police reform is done, police reform just seemed to be caught up in the middle of a firestorm. The firestorm is coming your old guys' way, no matter what. People, poor people and minorities in this country have been oppressed for so long, eventually it was going to come your way. You guys just have the pleasure, you're the ones to fix it, and we just have the pleasure to be the ones here to hold you accountable and fix it. So, we'll be at your office, the 22nd at 5:00, be there, I hope you're there, thank you for putting it on the agenda, we'll see you on the 21st. That's action, that took five minutes to get some action. So I'm not understanding why we need three town halls, a possible survey, surveying 10,000 white people to understand how, for them to tell you whether 3,000 people, minorities in your community, feel like they've been oppressed. That's craziness to me. I've done a lot of surveys in my life, I've sent out a lot of surveys in my life, I've redone a lot of companies in my life, I've redone a lot of departments in my life, I have never heard anything like that, but that's besides the point. You guys can send your survey out if you want to, the numbers really aren't gonna need much to me, because I know what it's like to live in this community, I know what it's like, grew up here my whole life, and I'm needing somebody else to tell me what it's like. So, we need action, we need to move forward. I know, Mayor, you're taking a lot of heat, but you're sitting at, you're sitting at the head of the table, so you gotta take it. You gotta take it with a smile, and you gotta get the job done. And at the county council, I'm looking at your guy. If the job's not done through the mayor, you guys gotta go around and get the job done. You have the power, Gonzalez, you have the power to set up any committee in this city you want. So, you guys have to make that happen. So, when it comes time, on April 1st, and a police reform bill has to be in, let's make sure it's right, let's make sure it represents the city, and let's make sure it's diverse, and it's spreading out through everybody, as I said. Everybody's had their say at the town halls already, this is over, it's not gonna work, kicking this hand down the road, let's get the job done.
Thank you. Listen, actually, Michiko.
Ezra Johnson.
My name is Ezra Johnson, I've lived in Ole Miss my whole life. I'm gonna read a quote from you, Mayor, in the newspaper a couple of years ago. "It's no big secret, right after we had a person commit suicide in our jail cell, we found a possible, we found possibly we had a flaw in the way we were tracking our prisoner checks," said Mayor Bill Elio, a retired police officer, who would proudly present a $7,400 purchase to the city county council for approval. "This way, we know the person who was supported, supposed to be doing their job, has physically, has to physically go back there and check." So, when that incident happened at the jail, which was right in Ole Miss, was that the only flaw we had found in the system?
Excuse me, at the time, that's where we found a flaw, in the, in the inspection of the prisoners who'd be in, so.
Was that the only thing addressed, is what I'm saying, was that the only thing addressed was that particular issue of someone calling that?
Yes, at that time, yes.
Chief Rowley, do you agree that we have a problem with the way the policing is in this community? You don't agree? Okay, so someone, like, I'm all about preventing things from happening, correct? Like, are you guys about that? Do you agree, like, it's better to prevent a situation from happening, does it take someone dying in order to identify problems?
No, you're right, preventative is better, yes.
So, what I'm asking is, is why do we have to go back and see what, like, what everybody's opinions are, instead of preventing a problem and fixing the issues that need to be fixed? Are you guys not sure what the issues are? Because I think that was a prime example of a time where we could've went back and looked and seen what the flaws were with county police people. The biggest problem that I got out of all these town hall meetings was when Chief Rowley, he stood up and said, "I really don't see, it's a good thing you don't know me." Like, I feel like that's a terrible thing to say, in a community where everybody's supposed to get along. I think in this situation, and in a time like this, like, where one side, like, people are upset about this happening, and the other side are applying to the fact, I think we need to find common ground around, and come together, and work on a solution to get it better. So I have no problem reaching out with you guys and having a conversation with you, but it's not gonna be easy to people when you say, "It's probably a good thing you don't know me." It's sad.
You were like, oh, joking.
Ah, joking or not, I don't think that life is a joking matter. Someone died, George Floyd died, and when he said in the paper, "The pendulum flew to the left," it really had me like, I don't understand why you would even make that comment as a police officer in the community. Like, what's, what's the right and the left have to do with it? What's the Democrat, Republican have to do with it? Nothing, exactly, so there's no reason why that should've been in the paper, there's no reason why you should've made that comment to that.
That particular comment was for the mailworms, I think, that nothing to do with the issue.
It was in the same marketplace we're talking about with George Floyd. There's no reason for you to base your, your political views in the newspaper as an official that works for the police department. That's part of the problem that we're trying to fix. It's not a joking matter, this is something that, like, people are passionate about, and they, they want change. Maybe you don't want to, because, like, I try to see things from the other side, like, I do, I do debt collections for a living, people don't like me, but I understand your side of it, because you feel like people don't like you, and no one wants to see their job, like, the way they were taught to do their job, being told that it's the wrong way to do it. No one wants to change. Everybody that's sitting up there is comfortable in the position that they are right now. The only way we can grow as a community is if you guys are willing to become uncomfortable with the situation at hand. That's all I would say.
Thank you.
Don't worry, these are not my remarks, I'm not gonna belittle you people. I'm Abson Genesis 39, North East Street. I prepared a statement about forty times over the past several decades, and they've gone everywhere, from angry to combative, conservative to sad, but I think it's better to just speak off the cuff tonight. This is not a black and white problem, this is a police and civilian problem. There are people in this city who are afraid of the police, not just because of their color. It's only that blacks have been systematically oppressed by the system for so long, that now they're finally standing up and bringing the larger issues of air. And I'm saddened and told so many deaths and incidents across the country for this to happen, but it is not just a racial problem. This is a city where a hate crime against the business can be brushed under the rug. This is a city where an LTBT candidate for office can receive death threats on a court of telephone call, and nothing is done. Yes, the police have a few bad apples, and I'm willing to say, with my interactions with the police in Ole Miss over the years, there's very few bad apples. But the problem is, when you have bad apples, who potentially have the power of light and death, bad apples are a serious problem. There is a lack of trust between the people of this city and its police force, and some people don't wanna do that, but it's there, and that causes problems, because it makes it harder for the police to do their job if they don't have the public's trust, and it makes the public suspicious of every single thing the police do. I look at the way a lot of cities have dealt with this problem over the past several decades, because this is not something new. This goes back in the founding of the country, and back before that. Mark Twain once said, "Everybody talks about the weather, but nobody ever does anything about it." Now, I did something about it. I've got here, and I will bring it up and over, the basic outline for the structure of a civilian police review commission within the city of Ole Miss, appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the council, independent of the government and the police force, to hear complaints, to hear grievances, to investigate, and if need be, to weed out the bad apples, and even refer criminal charges when it's awful. This is work in a lot of different cities across the country, and it's something that should work here. I also provide in it, for their first six months, they would sit as a police reform commission as well, to advise the mayor and council on changes that need to be made. And knowing the figure as well as I do, I know I can trust you to make sure if this becomes law, and you appoint this commission, and it's going to be a very diverse commission, I know I can trust you on that. So, somebody did something, somebody did something about it, this is a start, I started it, I'm gonna hand it off to the mayor, and Sean, and Glenda, and Paul, and Kevin, and everyone else, now it's up to you to finish it. Thank you.
Uh, Michiko, we can let the people outside come in. Yeah, it's, I think the rain is coming, so. How many seats do we have? Sixteen or so? I think we have about fifteen or sixteen, if I, unless I miscounted.
One person come in, okay. The other person, she just come in, she's not, she's not, she's self-aware.
Okay, okay, who's, who's next in line to speak?
Kurt Ireland.
I probably can get by without that, Whitey. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Got some room here. All right, I'm Kurt Ireland. I worked for the city of Ole Miss Police Department for thirty-six and a half years. I retired six years ago as a captain. I lived in the Ole Miss area for sixty-four years of my life. Some of my conversation is gonna be based on factual information, and some of it's gonna be my opinion. Racism, we can all improve, including myself, the police, there's no doubt about it. I wanna talk to you about my experience with different people of color. Some I've arrested, some I haven't. And there are many other officers in Ole Miss that will tell you the same thing I'm about to tell you. If you're a good person, if you treat people with respect... If you're a good person, if you treat people with respect, I'm gonna treat you the same way. When I was on duty, when I'm off duty. Have I made a few mistakes? Absolutely I have. Most of you have regarding racism. Now I'm a school security officer. Uh, I like the job. I like all the teachers. I like all the kids. Uh, there's a school, another school resource officer, it was his title. You greet them all at the door, white, black, yellow, you smile at them. They smile back at me. I eat lunch with them. Some of the, there's a particular, I don't wanna name any names you might know when I talk, but I'm not gonna name any. There's a great gal at Washington West. She's a black teacher. I enjoy talking with her. I eat lunch with her. Uh, and I could go on and on about that stuff. These kids, they all wanna be hard. They'll sit, you'll be sitting in a chair, they'll sit and jump on your lap. I read to them. And many other officers would do the same thing. I can go on, I've got a whole list of names here, that people with some really hardcore arrest records, criminal activity. I've been in a restaurant, they bought me a glass of wine. I did the same for them. I went to a barber. I joked with him. I said, "You're not gonna slit my throat, are you?" We get, we get along great. And this list goes on and on and on. This young man, Fred Spade, wrote a hundred times in the paper, he's more of a nuisance than a bad guy. He, he made the remark to one of the officers, "You guys are arrested me hundreds of times and never once have you beat me up." Like I say, we have made some mistakes. But that's my view of things. I'm gonna go on now and talk about the OPD. How can they, how can they improve? Now, I've been there for a long time. There again, I'm not referring to any particular mayor, any particular police chief, or any alderman. I listen, I watch the news a lot. I can't get away from what's going on. There was an Atlanta mayor who's now running for congress, I think, uh, black woman. Very articulate, very educated. Here's her thoughts about the police. You better hire the best and the brightest and pay them accordingly. And I'm not trying to tell you that pay is the only thing that's gonna make a good cop. There's many other things. Olean PD used to be the place to work. Not anymore. There are very few cops that wanna come here. One of them is Salem. If we all have a teaching degree, are we gonna go to the sixty thousand dollar job or the forty thousand dollar job? That's what's happened. And that's a fact. Nobody will deny that here, or should. A gentleman from a small town was called, "Would you like to come interview?" Well, he says, "I'll come interview for the job as a police officer, but I certainly don't wanna work there." Who pays more? Here's some facts. County Sheriff's Department. One of the reasons is Mr. Searls. I can't think of his first name.
Jack.
Is the county.
Jack.
Administrator. Here's what he said. "I am tired of losing all these police officers, cops." We train them, we put them on the road, they get some experience, they go to every county or they go elsewhere. That's a fact. And born out, Wellsville make more. Uh, and if I misspeak anybody that's, I've been away for a few years, but I think I'm pretty spot on. I think maybe Salamakum makes as much or a little more. You can't continue down that road. And there again, I just wanna tell you, I know that money isn't the sole factor of making a good cop. But, uh, they're not gonna come here. We've asked numerous times over the years for a training officer. One that could go to some schools, bring in guest speakers on, uh, racism. There are just a million topics, and I'm not gonna try to name them all and bore you with that. Whether it be the mayor, the alderman, the chief, it all comes down to, "That's gonna cost too much money. We're a small PD. We really don't need that." Well, how much may it cost you by not getting?
Excuse me. Kurt, can I just interrupt you one second?
Yes.
I just wanna give everybody fair warning. We've got a severe thunderstorm, wise, possible tornado, uh, coming across. Or the climate is, uh, bright for a tornado to develop. So if anyone would like to, uh, you know, leave now, uh, it's on until seven thirty. The storm is at the State Park right now and moving at forty-five miles an hour, uh, eastward, so. Just give everybody, uh, what's going on, so. Sorry to interrupt.
I, I'm just gonna make it one more minute at most. I'm gonna ask that you do separation, I'm talking about the police department now. You do separation interviews, you should, of the chief, of the officers, the mayor should do them, maybe some of the council ought to do them, the chief ought to, uh, do them. And make it, how did I word this? Let, give these people the opportunity to be straightforward with all of you. You'll find out what's wrong. It's not rocket science work to fix it. Some of this stuff you're not gonna like to hear, but it's the truth. Lastly, there again, I'm watching TV and I'm listening to four superstars. Charles Barkley helping with the jury.
Seth.
There you go. Ozzy Smith and a guy I did know that was just in the World Series. Here's what they said. "Don't defund the police department." "We also realize that we're not treated like the average person on the street." Many of them have good friends. Yes, you meet some trained, you need to get better at what you do. Defunding and all that, everybody's going way too fast. Legislators are enacted these laws. Did you ask the cops, just black, uh, uh, very high up in the New York City Police Department, in charge of the community policing, he said, "That's not the way to go." You're throwing all this stuff at us at once. We can't keep up. So, that's about all I wanna say and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's, uh, who's next?
Right up front.
No, uh, you'll bring the mic back. I meant you were right up front.
So, Wes Gilbert. I've lived in Olean all my life. I'm sixty-five years old. And, uh, I can only share my own personal experiences here in the city. Um, I've had three bad experiences with Olean Police Department in my life. And the first one, I think, is the worst one. When I was about in seventh grade, uh, I was picked up down at the middle school. And for no reason, like, say I was a kid, I did what kids do, but I hadn't done anything bad. I picked up at the middle school and taken over here to the police station and gave me mug shots, fingerprints, footprints and all that stuff and let me go 'cause somebody apparently had robbed the school five or something. They figured it was me. So it wasn't. So I never heard anything else about that. And then, um, a few years later, as I got older and I started driving, what happened? One mistake I made was, a lot of people I hung around with were crooks and criminals and things like that. Well, you know, I'm driving through town and, um, I get pulled over by, what is, where, Railroad Avenue, where the police, uh, railroad station used to be. And, uh, you know, he had me open my trunk, checked my trunk, didn't find nothing. About a year later, um, he, I was riding through town, got up at Sullivan and Union. And like I say, I'm riding through town, my car windows are up. And, um, by the time I get to State Union, I look my year, I see this cop went up the road. He said, "The officer down the street told me to pull this car over." So I pulled over, around where I'd manufactured Hamlet Building, they went through my car. And they did find some marijuana seeds in my car, but he said that he smelled marijuana in my car that we had been smoking, but we weren't smoking marijuana. And not that I didn't smoke more marijuana. And the one thing that I learned as I got older, you know, as I became, uh, become a man and had a family and I looked around and wondered, you know, "What, what am I going to do?" You know what I mean? I don't know anything about being a father, don't know anything about being a husband, but I know who does, because I've been to church enough and I realized, you know, I can receive my answers from God. And that was all that, you know what else I learned? I learned that as I quit doing the things that these individuals that are supposed to be protecting and serving, as I quit doing the things that they are arresting people to do, all of a sudden, I don't have police problems anymore. You know, in, uh, all the years I've been here, I, I went to Olean schools, I worked for the city of Olean, was given an opportunity as a supervisor in the city of Olean. All those things. I'm nobody special. I'm talking to one of my sons today. All of my boys grew up here. We never went through the police station or anything like that. And as I was saying, I've never had a problem with the police department. And see, a lot of this attitude, a lot of who we hang around with and what we do. You know, if I'm doing what is that somebody is doing or what somebody is paying to stop people from doing, I'm looking suspicious, even if they handle it wrongly. The thing about it is, is they're doing their job. Are there good police in Olean? Yes. Are there bad police in Olean? I'd say, yeah. But the thing about it is, a lot starts with me. See, I've got to start with my address and I've got to deal with Wesley Gilbert and get myself straightened out and my wife and my children and release that into the community. And that was all of that, letting my, let me have that kind of effect on the community and let the community come together like that. See, because a lot of these large group organizations, they aren't about trying to cause our society or our city to be right. They've got one agenda that they're dealing with. And a lot of times we bite into that thing, but the thing about it is, see, Olean is a small town. I really do believe I've gone built for a long time. And I believe that he will do it if Black Lives Matter or whoever comes with whatever needs to be done and say, "Here's what we need to do." And, you know, as the Bible says, "Do unto others as you want people to do unto you." Now, man, I can't step to you with some rugged mean attitudes, whatever, saying, "We're gonna do this, that, or whatever." You know, but come, let's sit down like men and deal with things in that manner. And that was all, I believe that Olean can deal with things that are bad, that we can get things straightened out. I really believe that. I believe in something that, you know, what's going on in the rest of the world, I feel bad. A lot of people experienced a lot of things. A lot of people have gone through a lot of stuff. But let's deal with us first. Let me deal with me first and my family first and release kids into this community that are gonna be respectable. And that was all, that let's deal with our community like that. I believe we can make Olean where it needs to be. And we can cause Olean to be what it should be. And that was all, that we can have some sort of a positive effect out into the rest of the world. But let's start with us first. And like I say, don't get caught up in a lot of people's agendas. Like I say, at the end of the day, a lot of people are just about what they're, I've heard it said it's not about all of that. It's just about the revolution. So let's do what we can to make our community right. Like I say, start with me first and build off of that.
Thank you. Who do we have next, Mitchell?
I go.
We'll, we'll go to anyone who has not.
Well, I missed.
Then we'll come back, uh.
I missed two.
What's that?
I haven't been to.
Hi, um, my name's David Pucci. Uh, I attended the first meeting. I did not realize that we were allowed to attend the meeting more than once. It was just my knowledge that we were only allowed to attend once. Uh, obviously I was mistaken, so I'm here again today to, uh, kinda speak from a personal point of view uh, as a member of O R J C. Um, that is what we're called, Olean Racial Justice Coalition. We are not affiliated with the Black Lives Matter movement. We do not model ourselves off of what they, how they move. We, we have our own values, we have our own mission, and we have our own morals. Uh, we have our own name, we have our own organization, and we are actually trying to move to get to that point where we are a nonprofit organization. We are actually trying to get back to the community. We are not one of these organizations that you feel like you need to call out and, and say that, you know, we have our own agenda. There is no propaganda over here that we have that is, uh, that doesn't have pure intentions. I don't, I don't understand who, who, who you were trying to, uh, uh, come for, but I just wanted to clarify that that we have nothing but pure intentions. And we're not here to ever say that only, only Black Lives Matter because that's, again, like I said last time, people are getting confused by, by thinking that we're saying only Black Lives Matter. Yes, all lives matter. Your life matters, your life matters, his life matters, my life matters, your life matters. We all have it. But until you incorporate black people into that, all lives cannot matter. How can you say all lives matter, but you're not including the black people? And please stop referring to us as the blacks. I'm a person. You're a person. I'm glad you're white. Who cares? That's the point. We're trying to say it shouldn't matter. You shouldn't treat me different because you have these assumptions. The same way that police go when they go and fish for, for things, like, uh, you know, when they're, when they're out patrolling and they're, and they're looking for suspicious people. The same way, the same way that police officers can be affiliated with bad people or have bad associates, is the same way that I can have a bad associate and a bad affiliate. Do you understand? Because there are some police officers that are on the, uh, well, I can't even say a few, but I know for a fact at least one, that is on the force in, in, um, whatever you do in your personal life is your personal life. But the same way that you can crown upon us for what we do in our personal life, which you don't seem fit, I don't see it fit that, that people feel like they can put their hands on their wives. I don't, I don't see that, that, that people, uh, uh, certain police officers feel like they can, uh, degrade women in, 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 uh, uh, talk to women in certain type of ways. I, I'm, I'm okay with that. I don't care what your, uh, what your career is, what, what, whatever you do for a living. But for, for certain people to crown on certain people for what they do in their free time, ain't nobody perfect. There are bad apples. There are bad apples. That's a fact. But you don't need to have people justify you. You don't need people to justify you so you can justify him to, to almost like, uh, for you to almost like validate him. We're not seeking that validation. Okay, you obviously got your position. Now use your power. Now you're saying, "Oh, well, we're coming at you too fast." How long you think we've been waiting? We've been waiting years. It's been years. There's been how many, how many revolutions? There's been how many wars there? We've been waiting. How, how long do you expect us to wait? It's coming too fast 'cause too many people are dying. That's why. And we're not saying that Olean is a terrible place to live, but there's a lot of crap in Olean that can be filtered out. And it starts within yourself. You are right, it does start within yourself because a lot of people are actually appalled at the fact that I wanna be a part of this movement because some decisions that I used to make when I was younger. But everybody changes. People change. The same way I change, the same way that you can change. There can be changes in Olean. We can. We're a small enough community. We're all very close. Which is exactly why a lot of people need to stop acting like their doodoo don't stink, because they do. So let, let, let's all come together and, and do the right thing. And let's stop trying to seek validation from certain people. Let's stop trying to push things off until the last minute so that we can, uh, basically, uh, not have to do what we're supposed to be doing because it's gonna keep coming back and we're gonna keep coming at you and, until something is done. And nobody wants to come off aggressive, but I don't see everybody, you know, being, uh, decent. I don't see everybody being civilized. You know, there are a lot of people that are coming off aggressive. So what do you expect when people have been waiting? And if we know that we can achieve this goal and there are people who are clearly passionate about it, what do you? what do you expect people to do? Because quite frankly, after attending these, you know, these, these town hall meetings, and after meeting a lot of these people, and dealing with a lot of these people, it, I think we need to stop acting like there's not an issue in O L A, because there is. And I've lived here long enough to know that, I did not live here my whole life. I had the experience to grow up in a more diverse, uh, uh, community. And I can honestly say, I grew up in Florida, and I experienced more racism here in Western New York. For no reason. There are bad thoughts, there are good thoughts, there are bad people, whether you're black, white, brown, whatever. But we have the chance to make a change, so let's do it. And let's stop pointing fingers, and let's stop acting like, "Oh, I don't do wrong." No, you know, we all do, so let's get over it, and let's just, come on, let's move on. That's, that's what I have to say for right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe I didn't explain myself, but I'd like to. Just take me a minute.
Go ahead.
Ma'am, I don't, I don't know you. What I, what I meant by coming too fast at the police, it's the politicians in the state that are talking about bail reform, how warrants are gonna be dealt with, who to give appearance tickets to, it's, and they're not talking to...
But those were changes that needed to be made. Those, those were changes that, that, those were changes that needed to be made. Those changes, those changes needed to be made, otherwise they wouldn't have been made.
But they, but they need to talk to the people that are doing this work. Some of them are probably good decisions, some of them are very poor decisions. And I, I'm looking at this from a neutral standpoint, as a person on the street and a cop. I wasn't talking about, "We're moving too fast on the racism issue," that was not what I meant. I'm laying this on Schumer and, and everybody else that's wanting six different things at once without consulting the people that execute this. And that's New York City cops, O L A cops, Syracuse cops, that's what I meant. Maybe I didn't explain myself.
Okay, thank you. Uh, who's next, Mitchel?
Angel, may I take first, Angel or not? I do respect you very much, Pastor Ross, but I need to kind of comment on something that you said. Um, it was about you saying, "Once you changed your ways, then police no longer came for you." And I do not see that as being the true case in anyone's, um, life, honestly. I see that as having been an excuse for people. I see people saying, "Oh, well, what did they do? What did George Floyd actually do?" That's just one, one person. Um, I'm gonna speak on a personal matter. My, my son, my little boy, um, just one little boy, I have six children. I have three boys, three girls, they are all grown. Um, we moved away to North Africa for a while and came back here. They went to the church for a while, right? Um, they, I'm just gonna speak on the oldest boy. He was a little boy, you know, he played football, everyone recognized him around town. Went, he, you know, was a good running back, everyone cheered him on, right? They loved him, he was a cute little boy. The violinist, the honor roll student, chess club, everything, everyone loved him. Uh, now, he's a man, almost twenty-two years old, guess what? He's not a druggie, he's a good-looking boy, he works his butt off, drives a nice car, he wears gold jewelry. Yeah, he's got a white girl in his car. Who followed him around? Does he do anything wrong? I promise you, he doesn't. But he's got brown skin, he's got a nice car, he's lived in O L A, hallelujah, praise God. Police have not killed anyone around here. But he's living a good life, he works, he's smart, he's a good son, he's a good brother. But he's still followed by police. He is still the only one in the neighborhood renting tickets. I've taken pictures, I purposely drove around the neighborhood two days ago and counted twelve cars that were parked on the sidewalk in the same way that he was, or worse. He's the only one that got the ticket? It is beyond me why. I'm sure you all know why. He's living right. He ain't into drugs, he ain't drinking, he ain't out there partying. That's only one thing, but I'm only coming at them. I can go on and on and on for hours. Most people here do know my kids, and they know they're good. And I do fear for them because of civilians, because of other community members. That's, that's all I can say right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert, much respect for you. But that, what you were saying, to me, that's that slave mentality that they've been building into us to keep us weak. We're done with that. Still have respect for you, but that's not working this time, we're not falling back, checking ourselves. It's time for them to check theirselves. Last week, the other meeting, the mayor said that he didn't know what problem was, didn't figure it out, didn't understand. My sixteen-year-old daughter says to me last night, "Dad, are you going to the meeting tomorrow?" Of course, baby, I gotta fight for it. She said, "Do you guys know something? You're trying to fight systemic racism. It ain't broken, you can't fix it, it's doing exactly what it's supposed to do." So, if, if that's the case, and we can't fix it, and the sixteen-year-old daughter can tell me, well, our council, they can't figure this stuff out, crazy to me, then I, I just wanna know, like, we're gonna have, obviously, we're gonna, it's not gonna start with O L A and City, because we're not gonna be the ones to show the rest of the world how to be, we, we see that. But we're gonna have to change the whole, the whole system. What we're fighting here, folks, isn't just O L A. We're gonna have to take it to the next level, we, we see nobody from the county here, we see nobody from the state here, because they don't care. Okay, so like, yes, we're gonna hold you guys accountable, we'll start with you guys, but we're gonna keep going up the ladder. My, my question, did anybody up there learn anything from any of these meetings we've been having? What did we learn?
There's a lot of anger and there's a lot of hurt, aren't there?
A lot of anger and hurt. Ma'am, how about you?
There's a lot, I agree, there's a, there's a lot of anger in this community. And, uh, I'm, I'm learning an awful lot, listening to everybody, and seeing how your feelings are, and, uh, that you want results. And that's what our goal will be, is to uphold not only results in the short term, but long-term results.
I'm glad that you guys supposedly learned something. Uh, but I'm just gonna let you guys know that, like, Mr. Probert, you were my councilman, correct? You know, you knocked on my door to get my vote, ain't knocked out of sense, like my wife said, after she spoke to you about it, said it, and still, it came to talk to me. That just shows where you're at, but I'm gonna let you know, I'm not a Democrat.
I sent a, I sent a letter, Ty.
A, a letter?
There's a, there's a coronavirus going on, I sent a letter apologizing that I wasn't gonna come knock to your door.
There's a coronavirus going on, and you're sitting there with no mask on, so you can save the lip service? Because that's not what I'm about, okay?
Sure.
No, I'm not a Democrat, I'm not a Republican, I'm an independent, because I think independently, okay? I'll burn both of the master's houses down, that's how I think. I'm more, I'm more, I'm more melting than I was marketing, okay? And all this right here, you guys got me so fired up, like, and not in a bad way, good way, right? Is this what we're doing, is a good thing, right? No, no, it just ain't a good thing? Holding you guys to speak to the fire, like you guys wanted a job and just sit there collecting taxpayer money, is that it?
No, I think this is a great thing.
Oh, okay, then, so let me ask you, uh, is everybody ready to say Black Lives Matter? Yeah?
Black Lives Matter.
Good job for you.
Black Lives Matter.
Look at that. Anybody else, can you follow his lead? You might be the next mayor.
Oh, they don't want that.
No, Black Lives Matter. Thank you, sir. See, how hard was it?
About to give the vows, though, you ready?
No.
No, you can't say it.
No, 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 you can't say it, you're a great kid.
Chief. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Sir.
I think Black Lives Matter and all lives matter.
See how hard this is?
You can't say Black Lives Matter, and then you say all lives matter, average. You say all lives matter, including black lives, if that's what you really wanna say. You don't have to put spotlight on everybody, we're trying to raise awareness on black people.
I mean, the same people that say all lives matter, right, this is what killed me. You guys sit here and you say all lives matter, it's Chuck Schumer's fault. When, when Chuck Schumer is trying to pass that gun legislation, right, so white kids stop going into school shooting them up? You guys don't fuck, you guys don't say, "All lives matter," do you? Do you? If all lives matter, you guys do some gun legislation, won't you? "Oh, we're quiet, frigates." This is what I'm talking about, you guys ain't ready to lead nobody. Blaming on the Democrats, blaming on Schumer, blaming on anybody that's saying here. That's all, and I like you, you're a cool cat. A little misinformed, but you're a cool cat. I, if, if, if everybody really needs to, what you guys need to understand is, they're just gonna give us, keep giving us lip service, that's all they're gonna keep doing. Just telling us what they think we wanna hear. I'm glad that your guys' organization took the step and actually put something together and gave that to them, so that they can't keep kicking it down the road, and I hope that it works out for you. And, and, and I promise that out, and the community who back you guys up on that, we're here for you. And, and it doesn't matter, don't listen to what everybody else is saying about you. "Oh, you guys are on this agenda, you're on that agenda, you're on Black Lives agenda." Be on your agenda for O L A, okay? That's all you gotta do.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just say also, uh, I wrote the toothless resolution that sparked this whole conversation in O L A. I don't wanna take credit for it, but Black Lives absolutely do matter.
Okay, do we have anybody else that, uh, has not spoken, would like to speak?
Nathan Harvey. Dan, go ahead and talk him when you're done, try to light.
I mean, I, I guess it's two of you. I hear all of you guys, two straight business, you guys just come?
So, Mary, I understand, no, I don't understand. I got a question for you and Chief Riddick, but first, I wanna tell you, Chief Riddick, you know that I've been your officer's biggest advocate. Every time I speak, I always say that the O L A Police Department has some of the best young officers that I've seen in the city in a long time. But there's a caveat in that. And I'll get there in a minute. I wanna ask the mayor and Chief Riddick, but this has been something that's really bugging me lately, we're both here. And every time I see it, it kinda makes me sick. You guys both posted an article by the sheriff of Chautauqua County. And it was, the label of that article, let me put my reading glasses on, because I'm getting old. The title of that article was Cuomo Late, Late to the Table for Police Reform. And the chief's name's James Tron. Do you still, do you two still believe what was in that article?
Yes, I believe he made a lot of good points.
I, I, do you believe what was in that article? Yes, sir?
Yes.
So you believe, and this is, I'm trying to get some common ground between us. You believe in that article? Where he says, and I'm gonna paraphrase him for a minute, because he talked so much ridiculous stuff in that article, I can't even quote. That the governor of New York is saying in his state and in his police report that all police agencies and all police officers are racist and abused. That's a straight quote. That's what Governor Cuomo is saying to you then?
I don't, I don't believe that was, uh...
Oh, no, a straight quote, just read it this morning. Do you believe that?
That the governor...
And that's what the governor, that's why the governor's doing what he's doing. Do you believe that? Yes, sir?
No.
Okay, but that's in our... Let's see here. Do you believe that no one, no one disputes that Black Lives and other minorities in the country are subject to, to too much, to too much, you know, bloodshed, but little of that, if any, is the result of the police?
I think statistics will show that.
Statistics will show that, do you believe that?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of hatred in this country.
I, I'll take the point. I encourage everybody to read that article. That is our neighbor in county, Chautauqua County. And you have the mayor and the chief of police basically saying all throughout that article that Governor Cuomo was bullying them into police reform. Bullying them into police reform. Now, I'm an advocate that says our police department has very good young officers. The system of how they have the police holds them back. We need community policing in O L A like we used to have. Where the officers will walk in the beat. I can tell you, I grew up in South O L A, in one of the poorest neighborhoods in the city. I didn't grow up on an hill, grew up on Tennessee Street, I was the farthest thing from where I reached. But I can tell you one thing I can guarantee every day, is I knew that one of the three police were gonna be in my neighborhood that day. And they weren't gonna just be rolling around in a car. I, I, that's one thing in my life that I can guarantee. If you were an officer when this was going on, we need community policing back in the city. I believe in our young officers, and I think that they want that. They wanna be part of the community, they don't wanna be part of the problem. But the system that's built in O L A, and the system that's built in all of New York State, continually, it makes them be part of the problem. If we have an opportunity to fix that, I don't understand why we get so much pushback from you and you. You should want your officers to be happy. You should want them to be in the community. You should want them to know the community. You should want them to know the people in the community. You should want them to be dropping by businesses once a week, twice a week, to stop them and say, "Hi, how you doing?" You should want them interacting with the young kids. You should want them back down at the parks all the time. You should want all that. And if you don't want that, we need to talk. Because every time, community, you just said you don't have a problem. You have a problem, you're not community policing. That is your problem, it is built into your policies, it's built into the way you carry your business out every day. I'm a policy guy. And don't, you, you as the chief cannot sit here and tell me that you police O L A in the same way that you policed it in the nineties. Check, am I wrong? You were an officer, am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong.
There you go, let's get back to that. You were an officer in the nineties, were we community policing?
Yes, we had very strong community policing back then.
Do we have community policing now?
Not as strong as we had.
Do we have, do we have any community policing now?
We do not, unless you will all know who you are in a different way.
We have very, we have very little, and it's not the officer's fault.
Any slurpees out every once in a while doesn't, isn't community policing? The bicycles that you guys used to ride around town, where are those?
What, what I'm trying to say to you is this isn't the officer's fault. And everybody believes that we are calling directly at the officer. We're not calling at the officer, we're calling at the system. It's the system that's failing the officers, it's the system that's failing the people, it's the system that's failing the community. And until we can acknowledge that, where do we start the conversation? That's what I want to ask. If, that's what I'm trying to get at. If you believe what was in that article and all that other rhetoric that's put out there about nobody's gonna be here to answer your 911 call, that's, that, that, and that was in the paper directly from the officers, and I'm offended by that. Because that's a political state, and it's not even true, it's not factual. There will always be somebody here to answer your 911 call. If it's not in Olean, it goes to the county, if it's not in the county, it goes to the state. Isn't that true?
It goes to the county first.
And then it goes to the state if nobody from the county is there, right?
Then back to here, and, yeah, that'd be...
But somebody's gonna be there, right?
We hope so, yeah.
No, no, there's no hope. Somebody will be there, right?
We'll do so self.
No, tell me somebody will be there, because I'm sick of hearing.
Yes, there is self.
Will somebody be there to answer the 911 call? So if I read that in the paper again from even one of you, you know that that's a lie. Am I right?
Yes.
Because you know where that came from. You know who's pushing that agenda. You know that, that that's coming from the federal government that's pushing that agenda. I don't want to hear it, because it's not true.
Okay, Danny, you're way over your time. Thank you.
I am way over my time, I'm always over my time. Little West, I respect you, but at some point, you guys gotta let the young people get the mic. You guys gotta let the young people lead the charge up quick. Because you guys had, everybody else had their time, and time is new today.
Thank you. Who has not give comment tonight that would like to? Right up here, go on.
I wanted to ask and check up on the task force that was talked about at the town council meeting. Uh, obviously, there's a task force waiting for police reforms, but hasn't been any headway on gathering people for this task force? And what are they gonna look like? What do they look like?
I think there's been a lot of headway with the meetings we've been having. We're getting an idea on, uh, what different entities should be involved and looking at representatives of those entities.
There's a few different directions and a few different phases to this, but we know that under executive order, the police reforms must happen, and that's a huge collaborative effort. Uh, are there going to be separate committees? Or one task force specifically for police reforms? And committees for other things? What's, what's the approach here?
I think that's a, that's a possible direction to go. Uh, we've been, as everybody knows, we've been mandated by the governor to put together a, a, a community input of the stakeholders. We're learning who the stakeholders are. And, uh, and then whether that group breaks off into subcommittees, that'll be a decision made once we get together and set the format.
I believe in the minute notes, uh, it said that there was going to be a creation of a task force. I think Linda was the one that came up with that idea. Is, has that been created yet?
Not yet.
When can we hope to see some headway on that?
Well, this is, potentially, this will, this probably will be the last town hall meeting on these subjects, or we're going on it tomorrow.
Awesome. Um, there's a few resources in New York State's Division of Criminal Justice Services that are there to help you guys out, get it to be verified, laws checked out on, ordinance changes. You know, this is kind, this may be kind of new and intimidating for some of our officials, so there are resources to help you guys in getting these measures passed and whatnot. Along with the rest of the community that's there to work with you hand in hand. I guess the last thing I wanted to discuss is dealing with animals in the community. Uh, one of our polls actually showed that the, 100% of the people that answered the poll said that animals need more protecting in our community. I think a good point, because look where we are. There's cute little cuddly things running all over the place. Uh, we have a lot of respect for animals in our community. And I would ask that as we look at police procedures and policies, that this would be at the height of the agenda. It's very important for everybody in the community to make sure that animals are given free treatment, because they can't be... And that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else who has not given comment who would like to?
Okay, I'm gonna scoot around the fist, so I can sort of look over everybody, because I'm a capital. We had homework last week. Any of you pick it up? Thanks, Linda. Somehow I knew you would. Um, so I have brought a couple of notes that I won't really go over, but the whole Italian-American comment was actually mentioned on page 12 and 18. Which goes to show that we as white people, and let's be real, talking about race as a white person is really hard. Okay? It is hard for white people to talk about race because, as I pulled from Ms. Robin Angela, essentially, we benefit from a system that has put other people below us, and we now reap the benefits. It's a nice gig for us, it's a nice gig for the white people. Uh, one of the reasons, actually, that Italian-Americans and Irish-Americans were classified, reclassified as white is because there were so many of us, and I'm from a very, very Irish background. Uh, there were so many of us as working poor that the working poor with the people of color started to overwhelm the capitalist system, and we're very, very close to overthrowing it. So, we did a classic divide and conquer thing, which we flipped things around. All of a sudden, Italian people, white, or white people, Irish people are white people. It's okay to be white now, and it's okay, now you get your stuff, and you can move on, and life is grand. So we quit fighting. And I firmly believe that one of the reasons that this movement is happening at the time that it is is because, once again, people are without jobs. We have nothing to do, except look and listen and hear. We are now all needing something again, we are all suffering again. And once again, we have been all put on the same page. So I firmly believe that that's why this is happening. And that's kind of a cool thing, it's certainly the blessing in disguise from this whole COVID situation. But we need to be better about talking about race, period. We have to. It's hard to start, it's hard to call someone out for being quote-unquote racist and know that you're also benefiting from that system. It's really hard, because there's a thing called white solidarity. And we have been taught our whole lives that we don't throw other white people under the bus because it's gonna ruin the bus for all of us, but guess what? This bus is not going anywhere good. This bus isn't, isn't where we want to go anymore. There are a lot of people who are very committed to making sure this bus stops running, and that's okay, because there are a lot of other buses, and those buses will do just as good a job as our bus did. And it's hard, and it's uncomfortable, and I have said a million wrong things in these meetings. I've said a million wrong things in the past 15 minutes. I've said things that have been insensitive or uninformed, and that's okay? Because when you have the conversations and say, oh crap, that did sound really elitist. Oh my gosh, that was so bad. Wow, that was kind of racist. Oh my gosh, it didn't mean to say it that way. It is a white person's biggest fear to be called out as a racist. We are terrified of being called racist. But when you benefit from a system that exploits people of color, you are. And in the book, I'll pull it out super quick if I can find it. It talks about redefining racism and, and distinguishing racism from prejudice and from discrimination. And our prejudices tend to be the same because we're getting the same shared information. We're socialized. And this woman is a diversity speaker, and she goes and she trains people, and the responses that she gets are the same responses that we've heard over and over. And it's all predicted. It's predicted because it's socialized. It's a social script. And again, there's nothing wrong with that, but we have the power to start changing our social script. And that's white people's job, and we need to do it. I know I'm about out of time. But we need to change the definition of race. We need to pick up this book, and if you're not picking up this book, you're not doing your darn job. And Mr. DePaul, what are you up for reelection, so someone can just run against you at this point? Yeah, what?
Look it up. Can I speak again?
Anyone else who has not given comment that would like to speak?
Can I speak? Because I feel like Pastor Gilbert is...
Yes. Yes, you can speak.
Pastor Gilbert, I just want to clarify, like, there's Black Lives Matter t-shirt. I understand that things have infiltrated inside the Black Lives so where people don't want to get behind it and not say it, I understand. But those kind of things have been hap... T D Jakes says, freedom has always been a bloody business. At the, at the Boston Tea Party where you guys, where, where white people were wearing Indian suits, throwing tea into the water, what do you think happened? It's a form of rioting. I don't condone rioting, I don't think it's okay, but I also understand that's a part of to where stuff happens. You don't see people rioting in Olean, do you?
No.
I understand the whole, the whole argument about you have to change your lifestyle to, and for people to look at you differently. As a, as a leader in the church, I feel like there's, those are the kind of people you need to go after, are the people that are not doing good. So like, it really hurts me that the church isn't even backing this coalition, because Pastor Hollins said he had left, that he was the only clergy member here. No one was here from the church. And I don't understand that whole, that whole aspect, when you ask them to come and speak and pray, like, where are the clergies? Where are they?
You can't ask the broken system, you face a broken system.
The church is way worse than the Black Lives Movement right now. Just by going on, like, I go to church, every week, I have people that I go to church with that think so close-minded that they can't understand that there's a problem. They think like each one of you guys, that there's not a problem. Like you, I asked you earlier if there was a problem in Olean, and I asked you the same question, and you guys told me no, there wasn't. It's sad, it's really sad that, that like, you have to go and point the finger like, well, if you're not doing this well, then the cops won't come after you. Like, that's not the point here. My little cousin said that we can't fix something that's not broken. We need to change the whole system. And it's gonna take everyone to come and find common ground. That's why I said it takes having a conversation, sitting down with Chief Riddick. I have no problem sitting down and talking to you, I have no problem talking to you there. I have no problem doing that. But until we can come to the, like, conclusion that there isn't a problem with the system, there's no moving forward. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Kurt Igerlaser?
I'd just like to respond to Mr. Gage, and just point to you, uh, someone will respond to the 911. Yeah, someone will respond, but that someone may be, if it got that bad, it's the issue. If you need help, and that's just a fact, if you need help right away, that's where...
So what you're saying, the police officers that we pay, right? They're gonna quit, and now nobody's gonna answer 911?
No, sir, that's not what I'm saying.
Say it, Fox News.
If it ever came to that, yeah, a trooper may respond.
What do you mean, ever come to that? Like, what are you talking about? Like, we're gonna have a, a World War III or something, and the officers ain't gonna be at work? Listen, if the officers don't show up to work, that means that they just showed us that they ain't supposed to be on the job.
That's, that's not what I meant. But let me, let me address one more issue. It's the community policing, the cops walking the beat.
Yes, sir.
That's gonna cost you money.
I don't care. We already paid them.
But those are the people you gotta talk to about. Because when I came on in 77, you had nine officers, a captain, and a sergeant. Was that maybe overkill? Maybe it was. But you can't do it with seven men out of platoon and a captain and a sergeant. It can't be done in the manner that you want.
And I, and I respect that, and I believe that.
That's true.
But what I'm saying to you and everybody in here is I deal with budgets every day, all day, all over New York State. And if you want something, you can find the money in the budget to pay for it. So, and you can't tell me that in the city of Olean, there's not some fluff and stuff somewhere. Because open the books, give me a couple days, I'll find you some money. Everybody might not like it, but I'll find it for you to get the cops out walking the beat. I can take away from, I can take away from some stuff over here that we might not need as much of and put it over here where we can get these cops out here on the streets interacting with our poor and minority children. I can, I can do that. We can do that as a city. We all know where the fluff and stuff in the budget is. It's not a secret. Taxpayers know there's fluff in there. Just let corporations' budgets have fluff in there. You just gotta bring it out. It's okay. Let's, let's figure out what we need, let's find the money to get it done. We need community policing. If that takes more police, that takes more police. It is what it is.
That's good to hear.
It is what it is.
A lot of people will, you have, good luck with that.
But this is the community telling you that, what do you mean? Yeah, if I'm the taxpayer and I'm telling you I want community policing, and you're telling me it takes two more officers to shift to get it done, I'm gonna look at you and tell you, get it done.
We used to do that before.
Get it done. You know, and, you know, here we are, third town hall. You didn't learn that there was a problem, you didn't learn that there was a problem. Mr. DePaul, you still got a hell of an attitude.
And he's up for reelection this November.
Where, where are we going with that?
This year.
And I, and, and I know, Mayor, I'm over by five minutes, but I'm taking my liberties as a citizen. And I'm taking my liberties as somebody who hasn't been here for two times. And I don't need a marketing...
You're from November.
I come asking you guys, you and the chief, a question. We have to sit down and talk. We have to sit down and talk about policy, we have to sit down and talk about reform. We have to sit down and talk about all these things that the governor is mandating you to talk about. Now, they're only 200-something days. We knew you'd kick this cane down the road. It's okay, we'll get there. Where is the common ground if you believe what you believe and we believe what we believe? Where is the common ground to start the conversation? How can I start a conversation with you? And I'm telling you that there's a problem, and you're dead set and bullheaded that there's not a problem? Where do we start? Where, where does that conversation start? Tell me, I'm asking. Matter of fact, I'm not asking, I'm begging. Tell me where we start the conversation if you guys are willing to budge.
No one said they're not willing to budge. I never said I didn't, it wasn't a problem.
We've been, we've been at this for four months. The chief, the guy who's gotta lead this charge from a departmental perspective, said there's not a problem. You, out of your mouth, said you don't understand what the problem is. Where do we start the conversation? Just give me some groundwork on where we can start the conversation. It's like having a conversation with a teenager.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming. We're, we're out of time.
It takes two seconds, two seconds.
Go right ahead.
I know you said the budget is really low, but I'm sure you can find qualified, very qualified people, volunteers in this room right now to provide in-service on diversity training and bias training to the police and, uh, people in, in this room.
We're already working on that.
Volunteer.
We're already working on...
We're already working on training for all the city employees. So we're working through our Employees Assistance Program that we contract with. And I will have a list of trainees available tomorrow and we'll get going on that.